Chief, no? Any questions on the agenda? I believe so, we're not moving anything, any of that. So we move to our cow agenda items. Read the entire thing here. A resolution authorizes the mayor and city clerk to execute an test to a program funding agreement between the city of Bolin and the Illinois Housing Development Authority. For the city's acceptance of a grant at work for the in for the amount of four hundred seventeen thousand dollars. Authorizing some staff to do all things necessary to execute all assurances and certifications to the Illinois Housing Development Authority. For the Strong Communities Programs, SCP, round two grant. And authorizing the community and economic development department to begin work on execution of the program funding agreement. In the city of Bolin and the Illinois Housing Development Authority. For the Strong Communities Program Round Two Grant to do all things necessary to meet said grant requirements. Um, Jethaiya, is this a review explanation?
If anybody's got any questions, if AJ is on the line, got questions or she can provide you the kind of details on this. She has, she actually has the total, yes, okay.
Okay. Um, I'm sorry. Oh, right.
Well, um, you do appreciate your consideration for this grant tonight, obviously getting millions of dollars is um, a great thing for our department in terms of uh. More, more help out there to fix up more properties, uh, or having issues to solve for sure. So, um, we anticipate this really being part of, um, rehab portion of the, uh. Of the department where we're actually going to be able to, uh, purchase houses and rehab those properties and fix them up and sell them again, so. We just appreciate you getting this on the agenda because it's something that can't be postponed for us with the deadline, so thanks. So, um, if you do have more specific questions, you know, if you say they can answer those, you know. You get away if you do think, okay, great, AJ is on the line, got questions.
Thank you. Is there anything from the council?
Is there, is there any action needed on this today?
Yes, it has, we have to take it, uh, vote, take it out of cow, and then it's also on for first reading.
It's on for real.
Or rate or adoption.
It'll be same.
Or a crude call, actually, it says thirty fifteen point two. And that's because of a timing issue, right?
Yes, we waited until the seventh to move it, uh, to a regular agenda. The filing deadline very next day. This allows, uh, AJ and her team probably during a necessary time, it was tightly settled.
Question to approve, second?
Yeah, that's Schmidt and Timian, a discussion. Hearing none, will call please, Professor Razak. Did you say that loud enough? Did you say aye?
Aye, yeah, I said that.
Uh, Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Let's see it.
Aye.
Okay, we move to our informational six point one, twenty twenty-two to twenty-four, actually, that's four for. Year twenty-three, quarter, four to three tasks.
I should pay her, also, obviously. So anyhow, as you know, um, we continue to monitor monthly. About this quarterly progress on the original. All set were established from two thousand twenty-two, one through twenty-four. I am, and I know we're going to be updating that, uh, so. Eight twenty-four, my five, six plan. But specifically this, we're trying to provide not only council but members of the public. Their understanding on where we are with some of the most important critical. Strategic goals that were established, uh, two years ago. And, uh, specifically, you know. What has been accomplished or is not accomplished across the three teams. And take a look at the accomplishments, you'll see that strategic plan update. Notice that number one is our infrastructure pillar. And you can see that's the greatest number of accomplishments of actually. Eight hundred and fifty-four, two, you can see that, uh, there's a lot of accomplishment, but not as much as for the one. And as you get to three, it's like, I mean, see fewer accomplishments along those lines. But at the end of the day, we're providing perhaps a good show as a percentage basis where we actually set. But we're at least, we're in charge, we're in charge of that way, it's sitting at about sixty-five percent, legion of all holes. So we are moving, moving the ball, uh, we need to enable this case. At a bit, and, uh, I think that this still happens. Council's trying to accomplish a previous council try to accomplish. Better overall.
Thank you.
Questions?
Questions?
In my office, I'm trying to talk.
Questions or comments from the council? I do have just a few, um, I've mentioned some of you already, Mr. Betas, but I don't, I don't remember what number it is on the rebranding.
Oh, rebranding?
I, I think that, uh, I'm personally less interested in that, that's something that has to get done. As the each of the website is functional and to use. I know you've been looking on that, sort of drought that, oh, there is an idea. Uh, you know, I'm also extremely interested in the crisis communications plan after having gone to a mayor's conference and talked about. Uh, these kinds of situations, so I'm very much looking forward to that coming forward in November. Um, I do want to make sure that the small business incentive idea that you mentioned is somewhere nestled in the updated plan coming forward. We can't see it, at least we know where exactly it would fall, and that's something I wanted to ask you.
Sure.
And, um, item two point five C on the market. I think that that probably deserves a little more discussion, um, because I don't think we've heard much after we, uh, made sure or kind of did work on everything this spring. Um, I have been in talks with Lauren and Cooper from, um. Multicultural Entrepreneur Center of Blackhawk about some of her other market ideas, and so I think we should come back to that objective somehow together.
When is that, Nancy?
Two point five C on the downtown markets.
Our C on the perfect, um, right.
Um, and then my, uh, two point three G, improve staff development and training is. Finding this again, uh, just reinforce what we said at our last meetings about making sure there's that training, um. And I think that, um. We've had, need some updates on where we might be headed with that, and I just wanted the council to know that there is a continuation from the last. There's a new plan, and then we see EGI training, et cetera, et cetera, in the next one. But, um, we definitely need to get moving on it since it's. Those are my observations, anything else from council? Hearing none, it will move to six point two budget review fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty-six operating budgets.
Your honor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules to allow voting on amendments to the proposed.
There a second?
Second.
That's right, and then Schmidt. Um, will call please, Professor Razak?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Finch?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Castro?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Murphy?
Aye.
Let's see it.
Aye.
Thank you, suspended the rules so we can make, have discussion and make motions, I think you turn this over to you, Karen.
Yes, thank you, your honor. You know, we should start it, but your first step, and on twenty-four, twenty-six budgets. And tonight, we are going to follow the agenda that's in front of you. Some small pages and then some big spreadsheets are going to be in the meeting. And I'm going to kind of go right down the load and address items that were outstanding from Saturday, and if you're. And we have identified five motions for your consideration tonight. Going to get to the end, I also want to know that we are happy to address any final questions or final motions. And with that, we'll start on number one, somebody's, I'm going to be very quickly, someone will have some, thank you, your discussion. First item, Alvin Schmidt had requested us to talk to the county to see if a chance we spell out the CIP on our tax bills. And unfortunately, the county cannot do that. They have to, um, show the levy rate as a corporate levy on the tax bill. So I talked with Bob, and we are going to vote with Tori to properly communicate the changes proposed on levy rate. And some kind of wire or other communication through, uh, trying to get out for that, and they come out of the screen. They're set, and I also talked to, um, our legal counsel, and there, there are. Set categories that they have to be on that. It was worth a try. Um, the second one was, it was regarding the new personnel we made, and it's, it's a tax number one in your handout. The question had come up, and you thought that you wanted to see this spreadsheet. That did not show rental housing fees over and above the salary for the total salaries. But if you take a look now down to the first year twenty twenty-four for the eleven positions. It is still net of any fellow savings that we have, but rental housing directly offset, setting by these. For the total for twenty-four is three hundred and seven thousand, six hundred. And then you can see for twenty-five and twenty-six. That may be more appropriately reflects that cost. Again, these are positions as listed are ultimately. The next one, we had a motion, um, to vote on the asphalt program, and it's going to be second from the general, uh, no action needed at all on that. Um, number four, a motion was made to contribute thirty-five thousand to community homes. Want you to know that we have updated that signature into the twenty twenty-three council contingency budget. So when we adopt the December amendments, that will be properly. Number five, a motion was made to approve the general fund, no action needed. And we also approved, a motion was made for the asphalt program, no action needed. And then number seven, a motion was made to withdraw our Auslet grant application for the Green Valley turf project. That is completed on the ten-year special project list that we're going to be reviewing later tonight. No longer showing on the revenue side for the Auslet grant or for the extension. Number eight, a motion was made to remove the item of the skate park. Uh, leave the total dollars up under the MKSK, that has also been completed on each one of the ten-year plans that we're going to talk about here. Simply moved the money up. We're already on the page two, much quicker than Saturday. Number nine, a motion was made to decrease the tennis court asphalt. Down to a hundred and seventy thousand, which was twenty-five. No action is needed because then we had amended motion to make it be in twenty-four. That has been updated for the hundred and seventy thousand in twenty-four, and we're going to review that in just a few minutes when we look at the spreadsheet. And then, yes, the amended motion was adopted. So then now we are down to number ten. And a motion had been made to approve the three percent franchise fee effective January one of twenty-seven and thereafter. And in item number eleven below. We have an option three, where I'm going to show what that potential impact is, that we don't raise it up to five percent. So there's some different options available. But we're drafting it because it was made by a motion, um, to approve that three percent vote. So now we are into number eleven, but let me review the three options. We did not adopt the ten-year, um, special capital projects fund on Saturday. So over the weekend, after we, um, had our meeting on Saturday, over the weekend, we had a, a, a couple of. Questions on these scenarios, and then Bob and I, we sent out two of those scenarios last night. Hopefully you've all received those and had a chance to review it. Third option is being that one where we keep the franchise fee at three percent. So I'd like to just take a couple of moments and go through these options. Because what I'd like to do. And after we review them, is to have a motion to approve the ten-year special capital projects fund. Choosing an option as presented or amended, if you have any changes at all to any one of the options that we have. Okay? So the first one, if you find, it's a spreadsheet, hopefully we can all see it. First one is option number one. And this one includes the possibility of transferring in three hundred thousand dollars from our cannabis fund. To help reduce and offset property tax increases. So this option is showing, if you take a look at the, um, third line down. You'll see highlighted in yellow, transfer from cannabis is two hundred thousand every year. And if you look at how years, that's all structure. But the second line will be saying property taxes. It starts out at five hundred thousand with twenty twenty-four. So that five hundred thousand plus the three hundred cannabis still equals the eight hundred thousand in new. Uh, project line. In this proposed budget. This option does show in years twenty twenty-seven, we left for proposed. Five percent franchise needed, needed in twenty twenty-seven. Because we go through option number three in a moment. If we decrease that amount, and we certainly can do that. But we'll have to make some choices, because we either have to push the central fire station construction out to the year twenty thirty-one. Or we can leave it central fire with that, but we would have to eliminate all of the MKSK money out to twenty thirty, and so it's a flip one or the other. But this option right now. MKSK money starting, um, in the second year, I had it issued. Everything else that we've talked about, everything is in the plan, leaving central fire to be constructed. In the year twenty twenty-seven, and it's got some money for economic development, um, for the Gacy Pen project. Which will kind of, uh, uh, for over two separately. Any questions on this plan? Option number one.
Question? Okay. Do I need to go through like the impact on property taxes on, on the residence or those?
Uh, I mean, I think that's very important, so that. In a separate handout. And I think might have gotten a little bit of a speed error. I have my big copy. But you will see the first one, make sure that it says cannabis on the top.
I'm letting you. Yeah, I think that's number six. That's the number six. Scenario one.
No, sorry, if it's. You should have had another handout that makes me put out, needs to.
The little white, the little side is the top.
It's just too small, hey, Randy, did you guys send those out with smaller?
Listen.
That's not what she. We can pause for a minute. You want to send photocopy of what you have? So she doesn't have, oh, she's.
I know Randy had them.
Oh, okay.
What I will do is run through. If you're, there we go, thank you so much, Randy.
You better read which ones.
This is simply a hard copy of the two options that Bob and I presented out to you last night, and let's not. It's exactly the same, no change is made.
Hard copy.
So keeping it, it's attributed, so it's cannabis, the one that you're looking at for your house.
But Ireland and brown, or?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, whoa.
Okay, is it, I know. That's why I printed off the larger blank. From the page two, a little bit. With the, the ten-year plan. But you have the right sheet. I want to make sure, now we'll turn to this next page two. Under this scenario. Just talked about, if we were to transfer in three hundred thousand. The, the reduced property tax, actually, we'd be down to five hundred thousand. So the total under this scenario would be a property tax levy for twenty twenty-four of sixteen million, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight ninety-six. For a total increase of four hundred and forty thousand, six sixteen-four, or an increase of two point seven nine percent over the current year. And as you may recall, we proposed on Saturday, eight hundred thousand dollars over. That increase was going to be four point six eight percent, so it is down two point seven nine percent now, under this scenario. Any questions on that?
No, it's very helpful. I mean, on some last question, Matt.
Um, where is the average homeowner?
On the next grid.
Okay, then.
We'll keep carrying on, if you want, you go in order. On second page will show. The transfer to CIP now of three hundred thousand. It does eliminate the transfer to the special events fund for twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, seven hundred and fifty thousand. And it, it absolutely retains the level-up program for the two hundred thousand annually, and we still have a contingency of about a hundred and five thousand. And then again, as you know, this is all proposed, it's activated, I'm going to summarize it, it's some better than what we, we know, but right now. Um, we believe we're going to have at least a hundred thousand left in the contingency. Any questions on that page? Under this scenario, this is the average, the impact on the average property owner. And for residential property on a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar home, the average value. The impact tax would now be a twenty dollar increase per year. That is down from thirty-two dollars that we talked about on Saturday. It is also a decrease, now I lost my notes. That is a decrease of almost eight cents from the current levy rate, seven point nine seven cents. Under this scenario. If we take a look at commercial on an average value of six hundred and eighty-two thousand. It's actually a decrease in taxes from the current year. And it can be, it's not equal. It's based on how the reevaluation citywide have approved. And we do not have control over them to affect the general property tax levy dollars. And then the county distributes that based on its. Any questions on that one? Turn the page then. The impact, our whole piece. That I know you're very familiar with. This page here. They turned this to their last page. Now if we show the change in property taxes, and then we're leaving the natural. Um, gas and electric franchise fee impact at the one point five and the three percent. On January one of twenty-six, leaving those impact. The twenty twenty-four impact on a monthly basis is nine dollars and six six cents. Down a little bit from ten fifty, basically one dollar, it was a drop of twelve dollars. No, one dollar, and if you annualize that amount. Again, it is down the entire twelve dollars, it had been a hundred and twenty-seven dollar and eighty-eight cents, now it's a hundred and fifteen eighty-eight cents. Thank you. Any questions on that one? Uh, same, uh, okay. And the second proposal. Option number two, and just going back to that handout, the other big handout we gave tonight. Pages. It will be attached with number three, option two. On that side, and the other big spreadsheet, just a little bit, so, everybody found it? Okay? Under this option, we are proposing taking fifty percent of the new growth in property tax. As you recall, on Saturday. If we were to take all of the growth. And it's currently available to us with our current levy rate, it would generate almost one point two million dollars, to shine that. This thing is proposing taking fifty percent of that growth. Which equates to five hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars total. So it's a little bit more in taxes than the proposal we just talked about with the canvas, the three hundred. Okay, under this scenario, we would be transferring in two hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars from cannabis. So the total of those two numbers, the five eighty-six, eight hundred, and, and that is listed on the second and third lines in your spreadsheet. Property taxes of five eighty-six, eight hundred. Plus the cannabis of two thirteen, two hundred, still equals to eight hundred thousand dollars to CIP. For property taxes available for CIP. Nothing else has changed on this spreadsheet. So all the, the twenty million pounds of CIP over the course of ten years, all the MKSK money. Fire station being built in twenty-seven, eight pennies, the N-Perks projects, those are all remaining. It does show, the red highlighted bullet up there. This one still does propose consideration in twenty-seven, and we're not asking for action on that tonight, it's outside of our three-year budget. But as we do another budget year next year, we will come back and revisit this, it, this does propose five percent consideration for franchise fees in twenty-seven. Any questions on that?
This is more of a general question than I had earlier. Um, what are the assumptions for the two million dollar P and I payments, uh, on the fire station?
It's in my, I do both. We ran those a month ago, and I think they're at four point, it's like four point ten percent. And it was twenty-year bonds.
So if by some miracle we fell below, okay.
If the price went down, there's a possibility, you know, you can always consider stretching it out. But of course, the more years you stretch it out, you're going to still potentially increase more interest. Right now, I think at the four point ten percent, it was like thirteen and a half million dollars of interest on the spot.
Thank you.
You, other questions? And then now if we go under this scenario, to look to know, kind of, that brand, I'll sit with you. There's the second scenario, that should say fifty percent, like, flow both property taxes and on top. Everybody found one place, you can see it's the first page, because we just reviewed that. Open the second page. And this one shows that's the, um, amount going to the CIP, the general funds levy, or the general levy, general corporate levy. Is now five hundred and eighty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars, so it's up a little bit from the five hundred thousand we just talked about. Again, those numbers, you can see the totals on all of those. This scenario increases taxes three point three three percent over the current twenty-three year. And again, that is down from the four sixty-eight that we proposed on Saturday. Any questions on that? Okay, quickly, same exact format is the one we just talked about, but you'll see the transfer to CIP has been reduced for the cannabis fund. Instead of three hundred thousand, we're showing two hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred. Each of those three years, we are still eliminating potentially the, um, allocation of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the special event. Any question on that? Then to the impact on an average, um, home and commercial, on the initial side. On a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar homes, taxes on the average will increase twenty-seven dollars. It was down about five dollars from what we proposed down Saturday, thirty-two, it was thirty-two dollars, it's something at twenty-seven. And then on the commercial side, instead of the previous one we just showed where it was down thirty-three, we're going to pay a little bit more. And then on the commercial side, instead of the previous one we just showed where it was down 33, we're going to pay a little bit more. Help offset that difference at $11 on the year. Any questions?
I have another, like, open question. What difference will it make as far as, maybe a question for Bob as far as the projects? I mean, and I know that's what we've already got a question between you 27 and 21. Will it make any real difference if these projects against the fire station? When they get started?
No, I don't, I don't see that as an issue. I think with the fire station, many critical issue on interest rates. That's a big part of it. I think, uh, with the length of the, about 28, 25, 30, I mean, I think what, 30, 30. Uh, it's really, you guys, it's a little, yes, you have that option. Uh, as far as the other projects, it doesn't impact JCPenney at all. I know that was a resolution.
Is that both of these options or just this option?
I, I think that it's, no, I think it's, it's two options.
You want to get on that? Regarding the JCPenney, JCPenney is in on either option. Okay, the, the main difference between these two options is simply the source of the revenue for the 800. The one option is 500,000 of property taxes and 300 cannabis, five and three. The other one is 586,000 in taxes and a little less than the cannabis. So just the same total revenue and the total, same total projects.
So the third by the projects remain the same.
Yes.
Remain the same. So either, either way, it will fund the exact same.
Yeah.
So the thing that changes though is the franchise fee was a little bit for 27. Not necessarily tonight because it's beyond the scope of this budget, but that is what will change the ability of the fire station project though.
Yes.
Not this far. Okay, that is very helpful. Thank you.
Okay, and then the very last page, and we're very familiar with this, but I'm more hopeful with it. You can see with that contract, it is, it is a tiny bit of a difference from the one we still worked. 10 hours, 24 cents a month, is 24 annual impact on all the evidence. Um, worth 22 dollars and 84 cents on an annual. And again, I know I said this, but it comes. All based on average usage, you know, for even, even all of our water, sewer, and stormwater feed, all on an average usage. But it's the franchise tax. If you are a low user on your utility bill, so have a lower bill than that. If you are a commercial person, it will be higher. But this is an average across the entire 30,000. And now we're on to the third scenario. And the third scenario. About 10 minutes. You'll see attachment number four, option three. And square in the middle of the page, I just want to point this out. Square in the middle of the page is where you'll see the proposed 30% franchise. This was the motion that was made on Saturday to keep that. So I just wanted to show the impact of the, of the, of the motion. I chose, because you could go many scenarios, but I chose the one with the 300,000 cannabis just for the purposes of showing this. This is the one that pushes back. If you look two thirds of the way down the page, you'll see central fire is now pushed out to 2031. And you'll see the revenue at the end of 10 years is just 40,000. We tinkered with this and we tinkered and we tinkered and this is the best scenario we could come up with, having 3% across the board with the franchise. Again, we're going to talk about that in another day. But I'm addressing it because there was a motion to them. The other scenario that makes central fire work. We would have to eliminate all the MKSK money out through 2030. We just swapped central fire for. We aren't getting both like we are having in options number one and two. Thank you.
I think one of the things that's reflected here is not actually what was moved forward and voted and approved at Saturday's work session. And that's specific to the state park funding. That money was to be removed, not reallocated MKSK.
Right.
Project is remaining alive. To move the money out to MKSK.
Oh.
And that would make a significant difference in allowing us to pay for the fire station.
Okay, I'm so sorry to say that one more time.
But that money was not meant to be rolled into MKSK.
Oh, okay.
The project itself was to remain part of the peruse, but the money was just supposed to come out of the budget.
Yes, oh, that was the motion. Okay, to keep the money out. Okay, I so, I apologize.
Which will have a significant impact in allowing us to do that fire station first and get back to MKSK soon.
Right, and so we bring this back, I'll make sure then that that, that that is that wedding. But the other two options, the other two options are self, okay, even if she included them. Yes. All around.
Okay, but I wouldn't say.
What I mean is, we, we can have it amended. Let me look at this. If we, it's a way to amend it. I so apologize. There were so many things, and there were so many things, and Stephanie and I too, we talked about this one. Um, what do you see here? Were you saying that it's in the red? I didn't think you're on an option. Yes, we pushed it up. So what you're saying is, it, you want it to be taken out.
That Cleveland motion was, yes.
It departed at 3.8.
Yeah, and I thought, if we can have a motion or whatever, there, 3.8, those dollar amounts. There's two amounts, 1,450,000 plus 1,839,500. So that, the total of those two numbers, somebody's got a calculator, needs to be removed.
You're right.
Yeah, it's almost an updated.
Mr. Silverman, is there anything obligating us to follow the motions as requested in the public bus?
Your Honor, I make a motion to amend the previously proposed budget to decrease the 2024 property tax levy to 16,346,696 dollars and change the general fund allocation to 586,800 dollars. And to remove from the cannabis fund the 150,000 dollars transferred to the special events fund for MOLI in 2024 and subsequent years. And to add to the cannabis fund and transfer the CIP fund of 213,200 dollars in 2024 and subsequent years. Which would be enough to reduce from the.
Very exciting.
Um, I have one concern about the motion as well, and that stated your binding future councils, um, on the, um, the transfer from the cannabis fund to the special events. Do it for 2024, I don't have an issue with that. But binding future councils is in.
Would be appropriate for 2024 through 2026 since that's the budget we're developing?
Yes.
Can I amend that verbally or do you just?
Amendment verbally to clarify that.
I will clarify that. 2024 through 2026.
So it's what is in front of you, but crossing out, and so it's going to be your company through 2026. Is there a second?
I'll second those earlier.
That is the motion by Schmidt, seconded by Timian, discussion.
Your Honor, I'm, I'm jumping and inserting in the process a little bit here that had been laid out before us because I think that process is setting us down. A series of questions that are not during the kind of, where we're deciding. And I think even at the end of tonight, the special projects fund is going to be not ready to go because of that one error. I think we'll have to revisit that as it plays out and, um, goes through because of kind of that, we're talking about what moves things up and back, as you guys mentioned properly. That is before it comes to us. Um, at the same time, I think that when I was looking at and addressing sort of all the pieces that are in the motion. With the property tax levy, it's more appropriate for us to look at capturing 50% of the growth, uh, not. We have to take a point where we stick on cannabis sense of this is what is appropriate. When we go to it saying we're going to capture 63% and 33, you know, when we cut lower than this, it starts to feel like we're cutting a little too close to the goal. Lying too much on unproven source of the cannabis funds. I don't think our projections will be off that much, but I'm too much more comfortable at the level of this, it's a stack going at 50% growth. I think that's what makes sense to me. Uh, I think that we have not seen, uh, MOLI, that that being a great investment for the city going forward. I think there are other opportunities and better ways for our staff to spend their time and relax the residents. Um, and then for the cannabis funds, as I said, I think bringing that into the CIP to replace what we're producing from property taxes, it's a lot of sense. And then this is kind of the level that I have to come.
Thank you for your comments. I have a quick question to the point of through 2026, because I was going to ask third item in the motion. 113, 200, 24.
Oh, yeah. Yes, you're right.
That applies to both, you don't finish that. Thank you. Different assumption, others? This is our, um, your responsibility in the budget, this little.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I initially really wanted to do option one. Because it is capturing the least amount and still funding all the projects. But to the point that the cannabis fund is still an untested fund. I, I would feel more comfortable exploring that in future years. But this is the more conservative approach until we can see the actual receipts on that account. And so that's why I'm supporting this.
I appreciate this. I do want to point, go against this yet.
I just wanted a clarification. So the change of the, and, uh, the only change in the motion was just actually stating the amount rather than the percentage for the amendment, just when you.
Yeah, we're not sanctioning the franchise fees in this motion. That's what you were talking about.
No, I guess I was talking about the motion itself as it was printed in.
It's not following that at all.
Right, so I mean, but the only, it's really, I mean, it basically is saying you're just stating the number rather, the, the dollar amount for the levy rather than. But it's still the same thing.
I just want to put up here with the reminders. I think, you know, continual looking at this until we get to the final motions of adapting the budget is important. As we do, when I was talking about on Saturday, of in balancing necessities versus necessities or the hopes and dreams that we're trying to, um, fund, especially with MKSK work. Um, just want us to keep in mind that we did hire a grants manager and we should be really looking to see that they are able to help offset costs. That, that was the whole point in pushing that, um, position through last year, I recall. Um, but also just need to continue, um, delivering on what people could express that they want from us. And I think that's, this budget does that in terms of the roads. Um, and security. Maybe you might bring up the fire. We can't put the fire station too far back because, right, it's a major safety issue.
I, I just, I, I think this budget gives us the option to have a fairly substantial, um, ending fund balance every year if these cannabis outperforms, which is the anticipation. And with that, we could start putting more money into the down payment on the fire station, which lowers the 2 million payment, which affects everything long-term. So I, I would encourage the council to consider, uh, putting extra funds into that, which affects everything else. And then we might not have to raise franchise fees. Right, and that's.
The hope is, even though we have to look at this 10-year plan, correct, to, to manage all of the competing priorities that really need to be dealt with. I don't think, you know, I don't want to stoop for the council, but I don't think they want to see the riverfront being empty riverfront for two more years than necessary, right? Uh, but, uh, franchise fees, um, 50% of growth, we are on a good trajectory. If you recall, I think, um, my little chart was like we were at point something percent of growth in my first year in council. And then was it four something last year and it's seven percent, over 7% this year. That is helping us keep our levy rate going down. And if you recall, those would be that we're on capital, on 321, we started at over $2. Correct? And now this is bringing it down to 178-ish.
Yes.
Right, I'd say in the span of three years, that's a, a good accomplishment and by staff and the responsible budgeting. So, um, I, I just wanted us to not forget that we're on that path of trying to save money. This is a, a bummer of a year, um, where we have to think about the future and the present.
And yet, when I put this together, I use the double statement, by, Bob said 50% today. But knowing that that's how we set our levy, that's why it's not, not, as opposed to percentage. The, uh, I did want to speak too. One of the reasons I really felt the need, especially to step back and do my plan motion says what one of the, that is that, uh, any option that included, um, at this time, projecting against an increased franchise rate in 2027, was not something I was really going to entertain. Um, I think that we very well may have to make that increase. And I think looking at both projections is appropriate in force and knowing that is a, a very real opportunity, but that is four years away. It's outside the purview of this budget. And after many of us will have to either have been reelected or put down this council. And I just, I don't think it's appropriate for us to be, um, committing that far out on a tax increase that will just follow that and come a year after I'm out of office. Eventually.
Um, so there's nothing further, we'll take a roll call vote in this, um, motion. All with Swiss eye.
Hi.
Timian.
Hi.
Finch.
Hi.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Castro.
Hi.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Murphy. See ya.
Hi.
Right, motion passes. Uh, we move on. Can we go to 12 then? Number 12 on your, number 11.
Yeah, and if we just clarify, probably bring this back next, then it will be option two. With the changes we talked about tonight. Being the big part completely out. We're getting the 3% franchise in at just proposed, it's not even adopted, proposed in 27 going forward. And we'll kind of just let it fall from there.
Those are the, the corrections or updates we just prepared.
Okay, the next one is, there was a motion made to table the vote on the ARPA. So tonight, we've got in front of you, in this handout. Of the ARPA, anyone being, and I so apologize for that, on Saturday. Being properly included on the second page of the ARPA. Second page looks like. And on the second page, we have now properly placed the Seaway, that's partnership money of the $50,000 out of ARPA in 2024. And we had had that money previously wrapped into the redevelopment opportunity. And in 185, we've now reduced that down to 135. Thank you so much. That was the only change that I had on ARPA.
Right, so while in the chain of motion, as is proposed here to approve the 2023 to 2026 ARPA allocation as presented.
Please approve.
Schmidt, I mean, excuse me, O'Brien is our second.
Second.
If I can, we'll see it, discussion. Very good. Roll call please. Paul is the person who has that.
Hi.
Timian.
Hi.
Finch.
Hi.
O'Brien.
Hi.
Castro.
Hi.
Schmidt.
Hi.
Murphy.
Hi.
See ya. Show passes.
You may have some questions, I'm sad. Um, on what just happened, so, so, this was a replacement of the, I ended up just tabled on Saturday. Okay, so this, so that, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Correct, yeah.
Great.
Yes. Go to number 13. In number 13, there had been a motion on Saturday. Go to number thirteen. In number thirteen, there had been a motion Saturday, who who payments to agencies, no action needed. In number fourteen, I think you just wrapped that up into the last motion. That's right, not.
Yes, yes, I believe so.
And then. Yes, and then we have special events. Yes. On the number fourteen, fifteen, we can cross off, not already done, just get out of there. And then number sixteen then was the public arts funding of seventy-five thousand and um, Stephanie and Granny and I went down and you listened to the recording on Saturday because of the tiny bit you you be able. And the way that the recording was showing was that we we had agreed to earmark the seventy-five thousand dollars to public art from the council contingency for twenty-four years, two thousand and twenty-four only, to seventy-five thousand. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, up to your, correct.
That is correct. I didn't read the first three words. Yep, up to. Thank you. And so that's just clarifying that. We've completed that and I've got that absolutely in the budget now for for twenty-four, and we can readdress it again in twenty-five, twenty-six. So number seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, we had motions for the Parks Fund Library to funds and internal service lines, no action needed on that. It all was up till Saturday. Number twenty-one, a motion was made to increase to ten thousand. We have properly included that, it is completed. Um, and we put ten thousand dollars in the council, having the council continue to lay twenty-four.
I thought that was to come for the twenty twenty.
I've got to fire my notes in my room. Eric, my.
I don't know what's in.
Twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-three, but we still have some left over. And we do, yeah, and we can, and we can certainly add that in for the event. So do you want the the ten thousand only to be for twenty-three or twenty-two and twenty-four?
As as the author of the motion, it was only for twenty-four, and it's really an additional six thousand because there was already four thousand left for the new commission.
Uh, I think we're gonna need to do a clean motion on that.
Yeah, I think you've been, yeah.
So Mr. Tivian, would you like to to make a clean motion of this to replace what was, um, Mr. Silverman, is that?
Well, it sounds like there's a little bit of, I mean, I think a clear record and help getting staff is like.
Oh, yeah.
They could be making the motion to approve as presented. Or would that be the appropriate?
I think we're also trying to clear up that it's not an additional ten thousand, it's a total of ten thousand.
Yeah, sorry.
The four that they usually get, yes, more.
You're actually correct. The way, um, that Stephanie, um, had written this, the motion was to approve the increase to ten thousand.
Oh, yes, okay. So it's written, we don't really need to redo it then, but just
Yes.
To clarify, we could do, entertain a new motion to clarify.
Or as presented, is what you say, because it says, I'm doing work again.
Yeah, you can do it. I mean, I appreciate how precise you want to be, but in the sense that you can build one of.
I'll entertain a motion to approve it as presented.
I I will make a motion to approve.
All right, to me, I'm sorry. Discussion? Very done. Roll call please. All the person has that.
Hi.
Tivian?
Hi.
Finch?
Hi.
O'Brien?
Hi.
Castro?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Murphy?
Hi.
CS?
Hi.
Thank you for. Then I believe twenty-two is done. Yeah, by the way, by your Schmidt's. So we go to twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. No action is needed on those. And I, and just talking to answer council has any further questions on the budget. I just, in your plan, the the next time you need to do. So, um, the one to hit the option, it's not until it's centered, but correct. That's the amendments, the budget is.
Oh, I see that.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you because you didn't remember what I'm here for. Yes. Nobody's having hearings and a lot of different proceedings. We've been put down to this, and you're putting back one more time. We visit on the seventh. Thank you very much for the quick turnaround of the council details. Um, I deeply very much appreciate it, and residents fully appreciate it. Move a little bit from there. Council call for order, please. Pleasantly. My pleasure.
See you later.
I'd say so there. You're about to make a stance. I'm waiting. I'm there now. You need to slow. Remember, you have to slow.
You have an invocation, Mr. Silverman. Roll call please. All the person, Murphy?
President.
CS?
President.
Chris App.
Chris App.
Tivian?
President.
Finch?
President.
O'Brien?
President.
Castro?
President.
Schmidt?
President.
Your Honor, as a flexible, the whole municipal and effective session minutes October tenth, twenty twenty-three, opening minutes, October seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, and consent agenda items twelve point one through twelve point four, including. Do we have to do the exact thing, Mr. Silverman?
Would you, I I'm sorry, not understanding the question.
For the omnibus vote, please just sub the second.
Now, you 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 can do so.
Okay. Thank you. All right, that was, um, motion by the CS, seconded by Finch. Roll call please. All the person has that.
Hi.
Tivian?
Hi.
Finch?
Hi.
O'Brien?
Hi.
Castro?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Murphy?
Hi.
CS?
Hi.
The eyes, the maze, now she carries. Not exactly of the second reading order. Item number fourteen point one, ordinance amended chapter thirty-four, water and sewers, section thirty-four, act forty-two oh three, detention system criteria of the Moline Board of Denture by enacting one new subsection C three.
Will you approve?
Okay. Motion by Tivian, seconded by Finch. Discussion. Very done. Roll call please. All the person has that.
Hi.
Tivian?
Hi.
Finch?
Hi.
O'Brien?
Hi.
Castro?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Murphy?
Hi.
CS?
Hi.
The eyes, no names, now motion carries. Not consent agenda resolutions. Item number fifteen point one, resolution approving a property tax guarantee by in between the City of Moline and Lake Shore Recycling Systems LLC. Motion to adjourn. Second. By Castro, seconded by Finch. Discussion. Very done. Roll call please. All the person has that.
Hi.
Tivian?
Hi.
Finch?
Hi.
O'Brien?
Hi.
Castro?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Murphy?
Hi.
CS?
Hi.
The eyes, no names, now motion carries. Item number fifteen point two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a test through a program funding agreement between the City of Moline and the Illinois Housing Development Authority and city's acceptance of a grant award for the amount four hundred seventeen thousand dollars. Authorizing city staff to do all things necessary to execute all assurances and certifications to the Illinois Housing Development Authority for the Strong Communities Program, SCP round two grant, and authorizing the community and academic development department to begin work upon execution of the program funding agreement between the City of Moline and the Illinois Housing Development Authority for the Strong Communities Program, SCP round two grant, to do all things necessary to implement said program.
Motion, second.
Motion by Finch, seconded by Tivian. Discussion. Yes, it's just.
This is awesome. I'm really glad that this is asking us. Thank you, uh, C D for for applying and getting this voted suitably.
There's something further? Roll call please. All the person has that.
Hi.
Tivian?
Hi.
Finch?
Hi.
O'Brien?
Hi.
Castro?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Murphy?
Hi.
CS?
Hi.
The eyes, no names, now motion carries. Not consent agenda, first reading ordinance. Item number sixteen point one, ordinance dissolving the special tax allocation fund and terminating the designation of the South Park Mall redevelopment project period to number eight within the City of Moline, Rock Island County, Illinois.
Finch, second read.
Second. Motion by O'Brien, seconded by Finch. Discussion. Very done. Roll call please. All the person has that.
Hi.
Tivian?
Hi.
Finch?
Hi.
O'Brien?
Hi.
Castro?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Murphy?
Hi.
CS?
Hi.
The eyes, no names, motion to advance second reading carries. Item number sixteen point two, an ordinance dissolving special tax allocation fund and terminating the designation of the Route Six slash one fifty redevelopment project period to number nine in the City of Moline, Rock Island County, Illinois.
Finch, second read.
Motion by O'Brien, seconded by Castro. Discussion. Very done. Roll call please. All the person has that.
Hi.
Tivian?
Hi.
Finch?
Hi.
O'Brien?
Hi.
Castro?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Murphy?
Hi.
CS?
Hi.
The eyes, no names, motion to advance second reading carries. Item number sixteen point three, an ordinance amended chapter twenty, motor vehicles and traffic of the Moline Board of Denture, appendix ten thereof, parking prohibited at any time by removing fourteenth avenue on the south side from point forty feet west of the center line, the first alley east of eighteenth street, east for a distance of eighty feet, and fifteenth avenue on the south side from a point forty feet west of the center line of the alley east of eighteenth street, east for a distance of eighty feet, and adding fifteenth avenue on the south side from a point forty feet west of the center line of the alley east of eighteenth street, east for a distance of eighty feet.
Move to advance second reading.
All right, motion by Tivian, seconded by CS. Discussion. Very done. Roll call please. All the person has that.
Hi.
Tivian?
Hi.
Finch?
Hi.
O'Brien?
Hi.
Castro?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Murphy?
Hi.
CS?
Hi.
The eyes, no names, motion to advance second reading carries. Item number sixteen point four, an ordinance amended chapter twenty, motor vehicles and traffic of the Moline Board of Denture, appendix ten thereof, parking prohibited at any time by removing fourteenth street on the east side from Fourth Avenue North for a distance of two hundred feet, adding fourteenth street on the east side from Second Avenue to Fourth Avenue, and adding fourteenth street on the west side from Fourth Avenue North and eighteen to the property line, seeing properties of two thirty-five, fourteenth streets and two twenty-five, fourth.
Uh, motion to advance suspended reading.
Seven.
Thank you.
Motion by Tivian. Did you do it? All the person with you. It's such a.
All of those.
Tivian, of course. And they discussed that. Very done. Oh, yes.
Uh, this particular, uh, street has it's this is, this resolution has taken a long time. I wanted to thank Ryder for the work he's done on it. He's met with the residents, the residents from there, a lot of discussions, a lot of compromise. And something as simple as which side of the road people should park on. A lot of people have different opinions. I just, I want to thank the engineering department.
Thank you so much. To a place further. Very done. Roll call please. All the person has that.
Hi.
Tivian?
Hi.
Finch?
Hi.
O'Brien?
Hi.
Castro?
Hi.
Schmidt?
Hi.
Murphy?
Uh, CS?
Hi.
The eyes, no names, motion to advance second reading carries, and that is all I have. Excuse me. I don't know this lady's business.
I have.
Yes.
Uh, yes, Your Honor, uh, just the big parade's happening, they have a dead parade, uh, they're having, so, uh, just inviting everybody, it's open for everyone. I know people are at. Can I go dress up if I'm not, yes, it's open for everybody. So please come with the family, uh, and this is a very unique event. Last year, I remember talking to a lot